Good energy. We're all ready to have a beautiful Bible study tonight in the Word of God. Our hearts are open, so that He will fill them. Let's begin tonight with prayer and give God the glory and thanks for our beautiful day, and look forward to what He has in store for us tonight. Brother Gordon, if you would lead us in an opening prayer.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful to be here tonight. We are thankful to be able to hear the Word of God, to worship together, to send your presence, and we ask for Jesus that you will show up here in this place in a powerful way, as you said, Jesus man.
Amen, amen, amen. Oh, may we have hungry hearts for His mercy, grace, His healing, and let's sing this song. Wonderful, merciful Savior.
Wonderful, merciful Savior. Precious Redeemer and friend. Who would have thought that a land could rescue the souls of men? Oh, you rescued the souls of men. You are the one that we praise. You are the one we adore. You give the healing and grace our hearts always hunger for. Oh, our hearts always hunger for. Counselor, Comforter, Keeper. Spirit we long to embrace. You are the hope when our hearts have hopelessly lost away. Oh, we hopelessly lost away. You are the one that we praise. You are the one we adore. You give the healing and grace our hearts always hunger for. Oh, our hearts always hunger for. Almighty, infinite Father. Faithfully loving your own. Here in our weakness you find us falling before your throne. Oh, we're falling before your throne. You are the one that we praise. You are the one we adore. You give the healing and grace our hearts always hunger for. Oh, our hearts always hunger for. You are the one that we praise. You are the one we adore. You give the healing and grace that hearts always hunger for. Oh, our hearts always hunger for. Great is thy faithfulness, oh God my Father. There is no shadow of turning with thee. Thou changes not by compassion they fail not. As thou hast been, thou forever will be. Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning new mercies I see. All I have needed, thy hand hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me. Summer and winter and springtime and harvest. Sun, moon, and stars and their courses above. Joined with all nature in wet and cold witness to thy great faithfulness, mercy, and love. Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning new mercies I see. All I have needed, thy hand hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me. Part in force and a peace that endures. Thy only presence is to cheer and to guide. Strength for today and strength for tomorrow. Blessings all mine within us be sung. Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning new mercies I see. And all I have needed, thy hand hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me.
Let's sing the last chorus again.
Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning new mercies I see. All I have needed, thy hand hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. And great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me.
Thank you, Jesus. Amen. And as soon as Pastor Joel's here, we'll start with his part, but I believe we want to also give God praise and take a moment just to offer prayer for those that have great needs tonight. And perhaps you're here representing a need in your body or someone who you know and want to hold before the Lord. We want His healing touch as we did sing. So let's just agree right now, and Father, I thank you for those that are touching the hem of your garment tonight. Lord, we know that you have called us together not just for a service, but for your presence, and that if we don't have your presence, then this is not your service. Father, we do. We call upon you right now, Holy Spirit, to touch these loved ones here and loved ones there that have a special need tonight, and we give you thanks and praise for your faithfulness, as we just sang. God, that there's nothing that's beyond your ability, whether it be in our mortal bodies for healing or in a soul that needs healing, a soul that's distressed, or someone who needs to have a life-changing experience, bringing them to you, Lord Jesus. We just hold our loved ones up. And we commit this night to you and ask your special blessing and anointing on our pastor, and we give you the praise and glory in Jesus' precious name, and everybody agreed and said? Amen.
How we doing? Oh, we got a runner. Hey, does anybody need a packet? Anybody did not get a packet when you walked in? Fantastic. I got three copies left. Here we go. Gary? I only have three. Zach, did you get one? No, Mary? No? Unbelievable. Anybody got one with their wife or whatever? We got an extra one? Any couples sharing one or got doubled up or anything like that? We got one. Mary needs one. We're good? We're good? All right, we're good. We're good. I think we're good. Ally, we're good. Thank you. Well, I'm so excited to be in this new study with you guys about disciple making. Super, super excited about this. Listen, Beth is good. She's an adult. She can figure it out, okay? Gosh. All right, I'm telling you right now, Pastor Joel was in a business meeting for five hours this morning and then drove two hours from Woodbridge, okay? You might see a little bit of the flesh come out, all right? I'm just saying right now. Watch it. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just messing with you. I might be a little more unfiltered than I normally am, so just be careful for that, all right? Just don't be scared, all right? Hold my hand. We're gonna go for a ride, okay? We're doing something a little bit different that we've never done before, okay? And it is this, that we are... I have given you sessions one and two are in that packet. I don't know if some of you have looked at it, okay? Some unbelievably wise woman came to me and said, "Hey, Joel, wouldn't that be a great idea if you gave the next session so that we are prepped and ready to talk, discuss, and work out the material together when we come together the next time?" Would you think is great? Because some of us, you don't like being put on the spot. I get that. And so this gives you the opportunity to write down some notes, to be able to be a little bit more participatory as we go together. I know we've added some new faces to our group, and we just wanted to kind of create an opportunity for us to talk and discuss and kind of go over these things. I'm so excited about this because if there's anything that I know that will change the dynamic of a church, it's disciple making. It's disciple making. I talk about prayer a lot, but there is nothing... I'm telling you, something that is mind-blowing when you say, "You know what, God? Who are three people, who are two people that I am going to disciple and read the Word with and memorize Scripture and talk about what God is doing in our lives?" It is unbelievably life-giving. It's also messy because Jesus walked with 12 guys and talked and did life with them, and they messed up, and they made mistakes, and they asked weird questions, and they got things wrong all the time, but He still showed compassion and love and worked with them, and so it's just a way for us to be more like Christ, which is what we want to be doing every single day, to be more like Christ. And so this is just an exciting opportunity for us as a church, as a body, to really look at what discipleship is, and are we doing it the right way? Are we missing the mark? Or are we really moving unified together, and what does discipleship look like? And I can't emphasize this enough, if you're not discipling somebody, then you're missing out on a big portion of what it means to be a Christian. You are selling yourself short because Jesus said it Himself, it in the Great Commission, to go and to make disciples. So if you're not being obedient to the command, you're robbing yourself of unbelievable blessings and unbelievable things that God wants to do with your life. And so with that being said, let's get into it tonight. We're going from start to finish. Session one, every session has a point, what each participant should walk away from discussion, knowing, feeling, and doing. The main idea tonight is to fulfill Jesus' purpose for His church. We must develop disciples who follow Jesus, become like Jesus, and live like Jesus. We started this year off by talking about Jesus being the cornerstone, looking at His values, His beliefs, His practices, how He handled things, who He is, who He was. We've talked about this in our Bible studies, and it's been so incredible. And so for us, we must develop disciples who follow Jesus, become like Jesus, and live like Jesus. How do they do that? By one, being in the Word; by two, watching us and being discipled by us. Head change to know the important elements of what it means to be a disciple. So important. Number two, heart change to feel inspired by Jesus' last words, to go and make disciples. As I was listening to this and reading this, I was like, "This guy stole my message from a couple of weeks ago." I'm telling you right now, it's either he stole it or the Holy Spirit's moving. I don't know. Probably both, but I'm telling you, it's like you're gonna see it and listen to it in just a few moments and be like, "What's going on here?" Pastor Joel probably stole this from this guy. I didn't. I promise that, okay? And the last, life change, to pattern our disciple-making efforts here this tonight around the definition of a disciple that we find in the Gospels. This was a hard one because some of us have gotten a different idea of what discipleship looks like. Some of us have even believed that in the past that discipleship is a small group, that discipleship is a Bible study, and there are elements in each one of those things that have discipleship elements to it, but real discipleship is walking with somebody, is saying to somebody, "Come, follow me as I follow Christ," walking them through Scripture, teaching them all that Jesus commanded, right? That's what real discipleship... We're gonna talk about that a little bit more, okay? So, opening question tonight, do you tend to research new opportunities or jump first and then learn as you go? How many of us are there? How many of you are like, "I'm..." You don't even think about it. You're like, "Oh, I wanna go build something." You go build some. You don't even think about it. You don't research it. Or how many of you are like, "I need to research it at least 15 hours before I get the confidence to even pick up a hammer," right? Are we... So, show of hands, how many researchers do we have here? We got a lot of researchers. Look at you. Look at you, people of wisdom. People of wisdom in here. How many of you are just hot heads, just like, "Hey, job's gonna get done. We're gonna get it done right now." Yep? You raise that hand, Mom. You raise that hand right now, Mom, and come to this altar for deliverance, I'll tell you right now. Right? We all... You're on the wrong side. We all do it, right? We all do it. That's happened to me a couple of times. I tell you right now, it's happened to me a couple of times, but we all do it. So people approach the unknown in different ways. Some of us need to know as much as possible before we start something new. Some would rather run toward what we see as an adventure, figuring out as we go along. Both approaches have their advantages and their risks, but some situations favor one strategy over the other. In our session today, Jeff will demonstrate that the process of making disciples is best approached from a research-first perspective. We need to know what a disciple is before we can make more of them. And so before we get into our lesson tonight, as you pay attention to how he answers the following question, what is the first task leaders must accomplish before attempting to return to disciple-making ministry? And then secondly, what did Jeff identify as three elements of discipleship? And Chris is gonna play that video for us.
Prior to 2020, I would often ask people, if there was some reason that we couldn't gather together publicly on like a Sunday, would you be ready to be a disciple of Jesus who makes disciples in the everyday... Prior to 2020, I would often ask people, if there was some reason that we couldn't gather together publicly on like a Sunday, would you be ready to be a disciple of Jesus who makes disciples in the everyday stuff of life? Now, I had no idea that would be a global pandemic, and then COVID hit, and many of us didn't know what to do. We didn't know what to do without a public gathering. We didn't know what to do if we couldn't be with all the people of God. And the question many of us ask is, do we know how to be a disciple without Sunday? Do we know how to lead people to be disciples of Jesus in the everyday stuff of life? Many of you thrived. Many of you reached out to your neighbors, built new relationships, found ways to serve, but many of us struggled to be able to figure out how to be a follower of Jesus who could fulfill His Great Commission without the weekly gathering as a thing we could fall on. Now, it's interesting, many leaders acknowledge together that making disciples who make disciples may be one of the greatest weaknesses now that we are finding ourselves facing in the church. You know, people's last words are really, really important. Jesus' last words in Matthew 28, when the disciples meet Him at the mountain that He directed them to go to, are this. "All authority," he says, "in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe or obey all that I've commanded you, and I will be with you always till the end of the age." We ought to pause and ask, how important are these words? When someone has an opportunity to give you their very last words before they're gonna leave, they're often the most important words that we need to heed. And yet, how many of us could say that we are faithfully living out those actual commands that Jesus gave? Now, if we're gonna think through how to be more faithful, many of us are gonna have to do a 180. We're gonna have to ask ourselves, how do we return to disciple-making? And that's what this series is all about. We're gonna talk about several shifts that we need to make in our own life or in our group life and in our everyday life to be able to get back to being disciples who make disciples. Now, the first thing we've gotta do is we've gotta actually define a disciple, because if you can't state something, you can't make something. And sadly, many of us don't even know how to define what a disciple is. So I would encourage you even now, ask yourself, "Do I have a definition of a disciple? And do the people that I do life with or community with, do we share that definition? Are we actually engaged together in making disciples who make disciples?" A good place to start when we begin to form a definition of what a disciple is, is when Jesus first calls some disciples in Matthew 4:19. "Follow me, and I will make you," or could also be translated, "make you to become fishers of men." Now, there's three aspects of this calling that you might want to consider as you think about a definition of what a disciple is. First of all, follow me. Now, if we remember His last words, Jesus said, "I will be with you always till the end of the age." So our definition should include a relational aspect to it. We are actually calling people not just to know about Jesus, but to be with Jesus, to follow Jesus, to be intimately acquainted with Jesus and His ways. Second, Jesus says, "I will make you," or "I will make you to become." And so there's a transformational aspect to our definition, that Jesus isn't just calling us to know things, but He's calling us to change, to be transformed, like Paul says, "into the image of Christ." That's why Jesus says, when we go make disciples, we baptize them into the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, because it's an entirely new identity that we get when we come to faith in Jesus. So we want to have a transformational aspect to this, that we are becoming more and more like Christ. And then lastly, he says, "I will make you to become fishers of men." And he restates at the end by saying, "Go and make disciples." So we know it has a co-missional aspect to it, that we are actually joining Jesus in the work of fulfilling His mission so that all nations will come to see and believe that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, sent to save us from our sins. So it's relational, it's transformational, and it's co-missional. Now, an example of that might be, a disciple is one who's committed to be with Jesus, become like Jesus, and do what Jesus did, and I would add, is doing, because we're not just looking at a Jesus that died, rose again, and ascended. He is now in us by His Spirit accomplishing His mission. So we are doing the work of Jesus with Jesus, and Jesus is doing the work for us and through us as we depend on Him. I'd love for you to consider what your definition is. Is it relational? Is it transformational? Is it co-missional? We're gonna look at how we build a pathway for making disciples with that definition in mind. And I want to remind you that disciple-making isn't just the beginning, but it's the middle and the end, that we aren't calling people just to believe the good news and be converted to Jesus, but we're calling them to grow up from being a child in the faith to a young adult in the faith to a spiritual parent who can lead others in the same process. Now, you might be listening to all of this and wondering, "How in the world are we gonna do this?" Maybe you feel a little overwhelmed, maybe you feel a little bit of doubt, maybe you're struggling to even wonder if you can do this yourself. But I want to remind you of Jesus' last words to those 11 disciples on the mountain. And I don't want you to miss it. It says that when they saw Jesus, they worshipped Him, but some doubted. Maybe that's you. Maybe you doubt, and that's okay, because disciple-making isn't just a beginning, it's a process from the beginning to the end. And here are Jesus' words to His first disciples that He also says to you. "All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me," Jesus says, "and I will be with you always till the end of the age." This isn't something you go and do for Jesus. This is something Jesus committed to do in and through you.
That last line is so challenging. It's not something that we do for Him, it's what He does through us and with us, which is powerful, because sometimes we can be overwhelmed because we can look inside of ourselves to be the one, something inside of us to be the disciple, and people looking at us to be the one that we're the ones that transform people. It's not that. So, questions that we ask is, what is the first task leaders must accomplish before attempting to return to disciple-making ministry? Yes, Tim? They gotta know what a disciple is. He said, "You can't make it if you can't state it." You gotta define it. You got to define it. And in his definition, Jeff identified three elements of the disciple. What were those three elements that we talked about, he talked about? It was what? It was relational, transformational, and commisional, right? Co-commissional, right? So relational, transformational, and co-commissional. Those are the three definitions there, or three elements of a disciple. So Jeff opened by recalling COVID pandemic, 2021, when churches were tested by the inability to meet in public gathering. Leaders wondered how they would be able to continue making disciples without the connection of Sunday. If you read in the book of Acts, they met together, but their ministry, they went out, right? The church didn't grow and thrive because they came to one building. You know, that was a part of it, but there was discipleship outside. And so what was... So you guys are gonna have to answer this question, because I wasn't here for this. So this is gonna be great. So what was your model of disciple-making prior to that pandemic? And what ways has your method challenged...
And what ways has your method challenged when you're unable to meet regularly? How many of you guys were here at Marlo Assembly of God during the pandemic? Let me see just a real quick. Okay, so there's a lot of you here. So what do you remember? What was the discipleship model here at Marlo Assembly of God pre-pandemic? Do you remember what it was? If there was one? It's okay if there wasn't, or if you don't remember one, that's okay. Donna, what did you think? One-on-one? Yeah.
I mean, most of the time, because we were together. But the best thing about COVID, in a sense, where the devil meant it to be, it turned out to be great in a sense, because the people that I witnessed to thought, they will never listen, they will never come to Christ, never say never. They came to the door at my house and said, hey, do you think this is one of the end-time prophecies? I was like, uh-huh. But yeah, what you say never goes to waste. If it's for the Lord. If the Lord sponges on your heart to love on somebody, don't give up. Because God, you know, it's like that church I passed going south one time, had, you do the fishing, God does the cleaning.
There you go.
And that works.
That's good.
And it, but actually, because we were online, it drew so many people that where we were stuck at at homes and stuff, our pastors, associate pastors, and those that were singers, all kind of put their knowledge together, and were still able to have ministries. Praise the Lord, yes. There's always some place where God will work if you put your foot forward.
That's good. That's good. Yeah.
Before COVID, the primary form of discipleship was preaching Sunday School and Sunday School. And there was always the relational aspect, building friendships. And building on that. But to me, the biggest part of discipleship, I think, pretty much across the board with a lot of churches, was the Sunday School, Bible study, and that was pretty much it.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah. Which again, that is, I think that's the norm across the board for churches. And I think that what happens is when we get to this place and we identify that, we also identify like, there's a difference between witnessing, there's a difference between like that ministering or that Sunday, and then there's a difference, and there's a difference with discipling, right? Because a witness, you could just tell somebody about Jesus, and that's it, and you'd never have a contact with that person ever again, right? Or, you know, you might have, just be led by the Spirit to share a word, and then that's it. There's no discipleship is that, follow Me, right? Follow Me, follow Christ, follow Him as I follow after Him, and working through that in a relational, transformational, and a co-commissional type of way. So Jeff said that the leaders would, said that leaders wonder how to lead people to be disciples of Jesus in every day without meeting on Sundays. And says, "To what extent have you considered your ability to develop disciples apart from your weekly church gathering?" How often do we think about this? That's really the question here, is how often do we think outside of Sunday, right? Because it's easy, and it's convenient, and it's comfortable to say, this is where I do church, and then I have my life outside of church. But that's not transformational, right? That's not relational. That's not co-commissional. That's not, and so, we've gotta ask that question. What are we doing outside of Sunday morning? What are we doing outside of this Bible study time on Wednesday that we are developing disciples apart from that weekly church meeting? Yeah, Lisa?
Thank you, Beth. We, I mean, you can, your disciples at your workplace, your disciples at the playground with kids, your
Come on, Lisa.
Your disciples at the grocery store. We're disciples anywhere we are. It doesn't, it's not in the church building. It's everyday life. Every person that you meet, you can disciple to them in some sort of way.
That's good. In Jeff's words, "Many leaders acknowledge that making disciples who make disciples is one of the greatest weaknesses facing the church." Do we agree? We do, right? And to what degree do you identify with this analysis? And I think, you know, I think that's what we were just talking about. We kind of, pre-COVID, and kind of across the line in churches. And again, this is not a bash fest on the church, on the big church. It's just, we need, we're trying tonight to bring clarity to what a disciple is, and what a disciple-maker is. Because Jesus calls us in His last words to be, to go and to make disciples. So in His last words, His powerful last words, He tells us to do this, has authority, gives us authority, tells us to go, tells us to do these things. And we need to know what that is, right? We need to be people who are researching that. In Matthew 28:19 to 20, Jesus focuses His last words on commissioning His followers to make disciples of all nations, to faithfully live out those final words of Christ. Many of us will need to reevaluate what we are doing with disciple-making. In Jeff's word, many of us are, many of us are going to have to do a 180. We're gonna have to turn around and rethink, as you consider Jesus' last teaching, how would you evaluate our church's success at making disciples who fulfill His commission? And I wanna speak to this real quick before some of you answer this. If you do have an answer to this, this last, I just came back from the conference, and in the conference, one of the speakers talked about, what does it mean to raise up sons and daughters for the mission? And the speaker's name is John Easter, and he's a part of AG World Missions. And he basically presented that there's a need of 41% of most unreached people in this Asian region of the world, where he's talking about like where we need to raise up our sons and daughters to answer the call of God. And I think of myself, I think of where we are. Are we a church that raises up? And I think of Abby, and I think of Noah, and I think of JJ, and I think of those who are being sent out. I'm like, that is, that's awesome, but we could do more. And how do we do that? By being disciple-makers. I'll say this, mothers, fathers here, you have little disciples in your home. That's your first ministry, above anything else. That's your first ministry, to raise up your children, to be followers of Jesus. If you're looking for disciples, those are your disciples right there, okay? You have some disciples. You can make, you could have a couple more, but that's what it is. So, let's, listen to me. Bible says, "The fool despises correction and discipline, and iron tritons iron." We want all that kind of stuff. If you were to say, Pastor Joel, our discipleship model is not effective in the church, you would not hurt my feelings any way, shape, or form. Because we're trying to define this together. We're trying to move this together. Angie, Pastor Angie, I see, did you see her raise your hand? Okay. What are you gonna say? What's your evaluation, Angie?
So I've noticed right away like how incredibly friendly everybody is, how incredibly relational everybody is. I feel like we walked into a church that was already a family. So I think that that's a huge strength of you guys. I think that, I see people like going out to eat after church together. I see those connections, I see those relationships. What I'd love to see more of, which maybe I'm just not seeing it, is, hey, let's open the Word together after service. Or let's come over and let's have a Bible study. Let's get out the strongest concordance together. And, you know, maybe discipleship for you, maybe you're like in the early stages of your Christianity, and you're like uncomfortable taking somebody under your wing, but that doesn't mean you can't like get together with other Christians and just talk about the Word, or pray together. And I think we're great at the connection, we're great at the relationships, but let's like, let's actually do the Christian walk together and talk about, hey, what's challenging you? What can I pray for? What can, and so I think that's just, I mean, not that I'm an outsider anymore, but like when we were outsiders coming in, like I definitely felt the friendliness, definitely felt the relational aspect. I just, I feel we could do better when it comes to, let's actually talk about things of God together outside of a Sunday morning. So that's something I think we could grow with.
What do you guys think about that? What do you, do you think that's an appropriate evaluation of?
I wasn't here in the pandemic. I should have thought about that with my voice for a minute. But I will say that we came here because of the programs that they have for the kids. And I do think that we do have a very strong program compared to where we were before. We had, we barely had Sunday morning for kids, right? And I think it got worse in the pandemic. And then we didn't have anything Wednesday night. And so I think that's, I think there's a lot of people that are trying to instill those programs here that at least gives kids a midweek, right? And not that that relieves the parents from anything, but I think that's another great thing we have.
I gotta say this, Diane Rains has a Bible study at her house every Monday. And she invited me. I think I was only coming here, not even like a full month for Sundays. And she thought of me. There was, it was only her and another woman going to her house. So she was like, hey, I don't know, I just thought of you right now. She's like, we're trying to build it up. And she has neighbors, like two houses down that come. And yes, there's like, it started with three. And then like me, her, and another woman. And then it became like six other women joined in, where her table's like full. And we're going through the Bible in a year. And I told her, I've, I said, I feel really, like, I'm like, I feel really shameful saying this out loud to you. I said, I've never read it all the way through. I said, I've only, you know, I have scriptures marked down in my Bible from sermons, you know? And so I was like, but that's not the whole Bible, you know? I was like, yeah, I would love to know more. And she, she's such a teacher. So I feel like there needs to be more of that. And I'm praying because I feel like I wanna, part of, one of my gifts is hospitality. And she's like totally feeding into me enough to feel like, I wanna do this myself. So I've been, so I've been praying for my five.
To the core. Rich, go ahead, man.
I've been here about, well, I've been in West Virginia a little over two years. And I came out of a very rough time. Went to a couple different churches around here, didn't like what I was seeing. And the first morning I walked into this church, I was greeted with a friendly hand and a hug. And I thought, well, this is a nice thing. The next Sunday I came back, they remembered my name. I recently went through grief share with a great, wonderful group of people. I can't say enough good for them, because they did help me with a lot of my problems. And that's the important thing in any church. If you're gonna build disciples, you gotta, I don't know, get one-on-one with them. I'm not very good at that, because I just never followed the Lord that closely. I always believed in Him. But my greatest belief was that I don't have to go to church. I step out my back porch, and I'm in the middle of His creation, in the middle of Allegheny National Forest. And what better place to praise the Lord? I got affiliated with a church just down the road from me, and for COVID, we never quit. We had church every Sunday. If you wanted to wear a mask, you could wear a mask. And I honestly believe that there was no one in the two churches that our pastor served that got affected with COVID, because he would not let us believe in it. And it works. As for disciples, I don't know if it's up to me, because of the way I am. But you need them. You need people to help people with problems. Minor problems or deep problems. A suggestion I would have is that you form a group, and you meet someplace, and maybe not talk Scripture, but talk feelings. Makes a difference. And God does help. I'm living proof.
I'd like to just commend you for doing that. God, we moved into our neighborhood about a year ago, and found out that on 11 houses on our quarter, five of us were either Christians or attending church regularly. So I said, this is a natural thing. If they will, we're gonna have a study here. And thankfully, they are willing to do that. We're, I don't know, four or five months into it. But beyond that, I would just say that what you're talking about, about becoming a disciple, in my early days of becoming a Christian, I was in church regularly. But I went a year and a half before I left for college, and I really didn't know what it was to be a disciple. I remember being pressed to tell others about my faith. I didn't know how to do it. I needed training. I needed somebody to look at, to say, this person knows what he's talking about. I'm gonna let that person show me. That's what I needed. And when I got to college, I found people like that, who were doing scripture memory, Bible study, sharing their faith, you know, music, all the rest of it. And that was a life-transforming thing. So I just say, guys, let's find groups and people who are willing to study, memorize, and do devotional life, and the other things that he's probably gonna teach us here. It's gonna, it's gonna transform us.
Hundred percent. It's good. I mean, that's what we're, that's the direction that we're heading in, that each and every single one of you, one, can define what a disciple is, and two, that you're confidently moving forward in becoming a disciple-maker. You know what I mean? Like I think of you, Rich, and how you just shared, from where you were to where you are now, and how you saw Jesus exemplified in that group, right? Jesus moved in the people in that group to touch a part of your heart that you never thought would be able to be touched before. And in doing so, the whole point of that is that you've been transformed. We talked about this, right? It is, it is supposed to be relational. You got relational, right? You got transformational, and now it's co-commissional. What does that mean? Is that the same Jesus that works in every single one of us, He's calling us to go share the same hope that He's pouring into your heart, my heart, your heart, and to do it into other people, and to replicate over and over and over and over again. And it's not a qualif, the other thing is like, oh, I have to have a Bible college degree? Or I have to have, no, that, no, you do not need to do that. Your qualification is right here. Just get in it, read it, study it, memorize it, get it in your soul, and share it with somebody. And go disciple some people. So, all right, I'm trying not to preach to you guys too much. Can you tell that I'm excited about it? Because it's what we're supposed to be doing. It's what we're supposed to be doing. And if we identified at the beginning, this is something that the church is not doing, what is God gonna do with Marlo Assembly of God when we align ourselves with the very words of Jesus to become the disciple-makers who tell us to do? I'm not talking about growth. That will happen in time. I'm talking about growth that's a deep spiritual growth that comes inside of us. So Ivy, you've got 30 seconds, all right? Because we gotta keep going. It was really exciting, we gotta keep moving.
I miss Diane Rains doing Sunday School here. People work, some people work six days a week, so they only could come Sunday for that. She would have us bring a breakfast. And even when Joseph was not away in the army, he would come, and he loved it, because everybody would just ask questions. She's an excellent Bible teacher. And she did invite me to that. I'm doing a 700 Club right now.
Thank you, Tim.
The pastor would send us a lesson, and we had to send it back to him, send another lesson, send it back. And that's how I got disciples.
Wow. That's awesome.
No. How would they know you're my disciples if you have love for one another?
That's right.
And how many people have we heard come in and say, gee, thanks, this is a loving church?
Right. Feels like family. Feels like, you know? That's right. And to top that all off, when Jesus in the Last Supper is talking about the Holy Spirit, and saying, He's, "I will bring back to remembrance everything that I've taught you." If we trust God that He's that powerful enough, and that the Holy Spirit is inside of you, He will bring back to remembrance, through the Holy Spirit, things you don't even remember that you read from some, or something that some preacher heard that you saw online, or heard, Pastor. The Holy Spirit will bring it back to remembrance. And when we are in obedience to the Lord, that means we trusting Him to lead us in these things. Jeff described three elements to a disciple base, elements to a disciple base on Matthew 4:19, where Jesus invited Simon, Peter, and Andrew with the words, "Follow Me," we're on page four. "Follow Me, and I will make you fishers of men." First, a disciple is relational. Jesus' invitation to fishermen drew them into an ongoing relationship. First, a disciple is relational. Jesus' invitation to fishermen drew them into an ongoing relationship where they would be with him, they would know him and become acquainted with his ways. He invites us into the same sort of relationship. And so here's a question is, what are you doing to encourage people to cultivate a relationship with Jesus? And how can you help them understand that their one-on-one connection to a Savior is the foundation of their faith? Go ahead, Lisa. Share your testimony.
Sharing your testimony with someone and um, letting them know, I mean, like Rich said, you, you can tell them where you started and then where you are. I mean, how God has brought you from the bottom. Now, you know, you're up here. So I mean, and I'm, I was in the same class, so I was broken and everything else. And now I'm ready to teach the class. So it's just really sharing your testimony, your story with somebody else and letting them know that there's hope.
You know, this question, the next part of that question is helping them understand their one-on-one connection to the Savior is the foundation of their faith. We cannot follow somebody that we don't know. We can't. Which is, which is the beauty in Jesus saying to them, "Follow me." Not, "Hey, I'm gonna see you every once in a while and Noel Ferguson's together." No, he said, "Follow me. Come be with me." They ate together, they cried together, they prayed together. They spent time together, right? Like that's, that's relational. Secondly, there's a transformational aspect to the disciple. When Jesus said he would make them into something they had not been before, fishers of men. He was proclaiming a process of change. Peter and Andrew caught fish. That's what they knew. That's what their job was. That's what they had grown up doing. But they would become people of faith, hope and love dedicated to Jesus. They were, their very identities would shift from family and career they'd known into a one centered on being loved by Christ. We are all invited into such transforming oneness with Jesus, but it takes time. Oh, all the impatient people in here. But I just wanna be perfect now. I just wanna get it right now. I never wanna make a mistake now. But it takes time and it takes effort. As leaders, how important is the continued spiritual of the, uh, growth of the people that you lead? And I can answer this as a, as a, as a pastor, as a leader here, how important is it? It's so important because the truth of the matter is, is that if I'm only speaking to you once on a Sunday, where else are you getting fed? Where else are you getting fed? How else are you spiritually growing? I can't, I can't come and, and read the Bible to you every night before we go to bed, right? Right? I can't have Jeff do the whole Bible on podcast for you. That's not gonna help him with his silky voice, right? I'm not gonna do that, okay? Right? He doesn't wanna do it, right? He wa-, right? In, in what, and so in what ways do you emphasize to your church the value of habits and connect them to the heart of God? Listen, we talk about these things. I try to give you pragmatics every single Sunday that it's not just to be hearers of the word of God, but to be doers of the word of God. Because not only do I wanna see transformation in your life, but Jesus wants to see transformation in your life. And there's somebody else who wants to see that transformation in your life. It's you! You wanna see that transformation in your life. And so it takes that time, it takes that effort and it is transformational. But just please, be gracious and patient with yourself, okay? Because a sure way the enemy will try to get into your head will be like, look at you. You took two steps forward and 17 steps back, or you're a joke. You're not a real Chris. Look at you, still sin. You still making mistakes. That's what he likes to do. He likes to you to believe those lies. Sin has been broken, friends. Jesus broke the power of sin off of you. And all it takes is, is you coming right back to him, say, Jesus, I'm sorry. Help me to be more like you. Shape me. I surrender to you. Forgive me. Help transform me. And you're right back, right back there. Third, Jeff said disciple is co-missional. When Jesus called his disciples, he invited them to join him in a particular task, fishing for people or evangelizing the lost. In his final words before ascending, he elaborated on the mission specifying that we are to make disciples. The work of the church is not only evangelizing, but making devoted, mature Christ followers who are in a relationship with him and one another. To what extent are you calling your church into maturity and mission? I think we're doing that right now. I think we're doing this right now. And what do you think helps people see the initial moment of salvation and accept Jesus' calling to follow him, uh, to follow him daily? I think that this is a question that we need to clarify on an individual level because there's a lot of us in a Christian communities and we're connected to each other. But it's not only about just discipling one another, connected, it's discipling those who are not really followers of Jesus. Do you understand what I'm saying? We evangelize, but it's, we also share the gospel, bring people to salvation and then walk with them, right? One of the stories I could tell about, and, and I'll just, I'll give an example of, of there's a woman, uh, one of my friends in kindergarten, his name was Chris Nelson. He sat next to me in kindergarten and we got to know each other and I wanted to hang out with him. And then mom, being the amazing mom that she was, connected me and we go and hang out and all that kind of stuff. But that became a point for mom to evangelize and to talk to this woman by the name of Kim. And my mom would talk to her and connect with her and mom, what did you, you invited her to come to a Bible study one time? She wasn't a Christian. She wasn't a Christian. This woman was not a Christian. My mom invited to her Bible study. They did a study called Experiencing God by Henry Blackeberry. And for weeks and weeks and weeks, they'd come to the house, sit at the dining room table and they'd go through the book together. And the Lord saved that whole family. You know what I mean? Like, did it happen overnight? Did it happen overnight, mom? No. But week after week, the Lord would bring revelation. The, and, and then she got saved and she prayed and her sons got saved. And she prayed some more and their husband got saved. And it's just, that's, that's what it is. It's not complicated. But, but it's got to start with God saying, "I'm calling you to be a fisher." That means we are casting out, we're going out, we're evangelizing, we're telling people about Jesus and we're bringing them into our life, which is the scary part. Cause you don't know if there's some, you know, it's just scary. It's a scary world out there. But Jesus calls us to go and to do this. And so Jeff acknowledges that as a leader, you might be overwhelmed with the idea of incorporating a relational, transformational and co-missional aspect of disciple making into the fabric of the church's spiritual life. I'm not afraid of it. I, I'm excited about it, but the disciple making process. And Jesus promised to be with us in Matthew 28:20. Whom have you witnessed grow from new believer to mature disciple? How long did it take? How does his or her story encourage you to seek? And I kinda just kinda give you an example of that right now. But I know that there are some of you that have been coming to this church since January. And I have seen, or even just in the past six or seven months, who were like, you know, I don't even know about this Jesus guy. We got this random dude that comes up out on Sunday mornings, all sweaty and yells at us about biblical stuff all the time. Makes weird funny jokes, like, "Help me, help you." Doesn't really know what's going on or anything. But the Lord is doing something in your heart, in your life, and they're starting to see some maturity. And so we wanna, we wanna continue to nurture that and cultivate that. And so there might be a moment where, you know, I might come up and say, hey, Tim, there's a young man who's been coming to our church. I know you're faithful. I know that you're mature in the Lord. Would you come alongside them and, and disciple them? But I'll say this to you, there are things in the scriptures, you know, I'm your pastor, I'm your leader, but there's things in the scripture that I, you don't need permission from me to do. And this is one of them. You don't need my permission to go disciple people. Do you know why? Because it was Jesus who said it and he's way above me. He's the one I serve. He's the one you serve. So you don't have to be like, oh, I wonder if Pastor Joel wants me to disciple this person? Who cares what I think? It's what Jesus wants you to do. Just go and do it. But there might be a moment where I say, you know what, Joe, I know that there's some young men, there's some, some young people in the church. I see that, you know, you really love, care about them. I need you to disciple them. You know, hey, Herschel, you have so much wisdom and love for people and patience. I need you to go disciple this person. That's what I'm talking about. There's gonna be moments where we need to do that and you're gonna, gonna be hearing me probably reach out to some of you about that to, to cultivate that and where we get started. So let's look to the word tonight for some Bible explanation. And Jeff, in this three-pronged definition of discipleship, Jeff noted that a person's last words are usually important. Jesus' last words to his disciples so influenced the church that we call it the Great Commission. And at, and as a very familiar passage to church leaders, these verses from Matthew can often be rushed through with details getting left out. So let's examine Jesus' last words with fresh eyes to see what we can learn about discipleship. And let's just read it real quick. Pull it up here, Matthew 28:16 to 20. Then the eleven disciples left for Galilee, going to the mountain where Jesus had told them to go. When they saw him, they worshiped him, but some of them doubted. Jesus came and told his disciples, "I have been given all authority in heaven and on earth. Therefore, go and make disciples of all the nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Teach these new disciples to obey all the commands I have given you. And be sure of this, I am with you always, even to the end of the age." The scene opens after the resurrection with 11 disciples obeying the risen Jesus by traveling to Galilee, where they again saw him in verse 17, and we learn that they worshiped him, but some doubted or hesitated. And Jesus did not separate, separate those doubted from those who didn't. He gave them all the same commission. Likewise, he calls us even in our weaknesses to follow him and live out our faith for his sake. Have you followed him but wavered on occasion? You're still called. You're still called. And what do you tell people who believe their imperfect faith makes them unqualified to be a disciple maker? You're still called. You're still called. In what ways can you point to the apostles' flaws to encourage them? You see throughout the gospels, the apostles made many mistakes. Had many failures, had many problems, but Jesus never was like, yeah, I'm gonna take back that making you fishers of men thing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna reel that back. A little fish pun for you there. He didn't do that. He didn't do that. He says, "You're called." I think sometimes we, you know, right, let's get a little more pragmatic. Well, I wanna disciple people. My house is always a mess. I got kids. I got things going on or whatever. Mm-mm. No, no. Don't disqualify. Don't make excuses. Oh, huh? Yeah, go, what'd you say? Go to coffee shop, right? You know, or just invite them into your life and just be real. Cause it's like, that's what people want. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I've had people over at my house and I'm like, listen, I got three kids. It is what it is. You know what I mean? It is what it is, alright? It happens, okay?
It's a misconception when you feel like, oh, my house is dirty. You don't have to totally clean it up. You're living in it. Like I, once I put that in my head, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm living in this house. And I'm cleaning it as if nobody lives here.
Right, no, yeah.
Nobody uses the bathroom. Nobody uses the living room.
Sure. I can't keep up with the amount of toothpaste that's just smeared across. It's like, it's like the people of Israel coming out of Egypt, where the doorposts are just covered in toothpaste. My children, just everywhere. I don't know where it comes from. I literally bought caps that keep it off, but it still goes everywhere. You know what I mean? Mom, I see you're judging me with your eyes. I don't appreciate it, okay? Alright, we all can't be personally, it's, it's true. It's everywhere. But I, I think that sometimes we, we do this, we disqualify ourselves. And God's like, no, no, no. The people that doubted and the people that worship, he didn't separate them and say, yeah, you're not. These guys, yeah. You guys, no. He said, all of you go. Every one of you go. And Jeff described disciples versus relational in verse 20. Jesus promised them his presence as they went out to accomplish his mission. He would be with them forever, all the time. And as we help disciples of Jesus grow in their faith, let's prioritize the necessity of knowing Jesus personally. Not just knowing facts about him. To be a disciple is to be intimately acquainted with Jesus and his, and his ways. I'm gonna say this real quick, cause I really feel like the Holy Spirit is something to say this. Some of you are afraid to let Jesus get close to you. Some of you've got some dark stuff in your life, some pain, some hurt, some unresolved, whatever. And you don't want Jesus getting that close to you. Or you're holding on to it for whatever reason. And he wants to be the one who takes it from you. But the thing is, he won't take it from you because he's the perfect gentleman. He will never force you to do something that you don't want to do. But I will tell you tonight that I truly believe, that's a word for some of you here, that you don't want Jesus to get close to you because you're like, ah, but Jesus, you haven't seen what I've done. Ah, false. He has. He has. Speak to us, Sister Becky.
The light shines in the darkness and the darkness cannot comprehend it.
And it can't overcome it.
And there is no darkness in our hearts or our souls that if we will bring into the light, that his light, his light, his light will take care of it and heal it and you can be free from all darkness. But he is not going to make us do that. He said, if we come, if we walk in the light, if we walk, that's an action, that's a faith action. That we have to walk into the light and ask God's light to shine. And it will come, it will come to the light. It's as if we confess it, we confess our sins. He is faithful. He's just not faithful, but he does the completed work. He cleanses it.
He does it, yeah.
He cleanses us from all unrighteousness. I mean, he's already even done this, but there is that action of faith that, and that might have to be a daily thing, confession and repentance. It's not one and done. It's like a lifestyle. Because if we're not, we're not beyond sin. We have the sinful disposition that we have. And the constant of being able to just not be afraid to bring that disposition or the things that we just, we feel. We, like the brother said back there, we feel, we, we need to talk about our feelings.
Yes, we do.
We need to talk about our feelings to the Lord too and say, Lord, this is how I feel. Help me. So that's my.
You know, another one that comes to me is Jesus, I'm the way, the truth and the life, right? And he also says, the truth will set you free. And some of us have believed a lie for so long that the, the, the truth is like, uh, it's almost like, this is a graphic wave, but we almost gag at it. Cause we've, we've, we've been believing the lie for so long and the truth is coming in, but ah, I'm not used to that. I'm not comfortable with that. And God's saying, listen, you wanna be free? The truth, live in the truth, walk in the truth, experience the truth. Don't be afraid to let me into those places. Don't be afraid because his perfect love covers all fear. Cast out all fear covers a multitude of sins. That's what he does. That's what he does for us. So he wants to, he wants to be intimately acquainted with us. I think maybe some homework for you is, how would you describe your relationship with Jesus since you began believing in him? And in what ways can you grow? What ways can you, can you grow? Sorry, I lost my spot here. Thank you, my love. Yes. In what ways can you grow to know his heart more than merely gaining knowledge about him? Let's do this real quick. That first question, I'd like for you to write that down personally. But for some of us who've been walking with the Lord, maybe you can take a second and share with us, in what ways can you grow to know his heart more than merely? "In what ways can you grow to know his heart more than merely gaining knowledge about him?" What are some things, some of you that have been walking with Jesus for a hot minute?
It is an intimate thing. It's one with one, in one. When you know about something, even the devil knew how powerful Jesus was when he tempted him in the desert. That's why we have to know the word, because we can be deceived if we're not. So we have to know these things, and to be intimate with Jesus is to know him. He said, "I'm the vine, you're the branches. He that clings to me, you know, he will, he will fill us out." I mean, and I was listening, that brother back there struck my heart. Never let the devil think that you can't be used just because of past sins. That would put me on the back bench, believe me. Because God is not done with you yet, brother. Paul, even the disciples didn't want Saul in their group, because they had, naturally, they were human beings. They had heard what he did to commission many people to death. But you know what? Paul wrote most of the New Testament, hallelujah to the glory of God, what God can do to somebody. So you're not done yet, brother.
You're not done, Rich. We love you, man. We love you. Trusting in the plan, trusting in him and his plan. It's perfect, Rose. Yes, Rich.
You speak about the darkness, but it is hard to let go of it. I sit each morning and read a little scripture, read some of the Bible. And it's still hard to get out of the darkness. It's maybe not as dark some days as it is other days. But you gotta see a light at the end of the tunnel sometime.
Yeah.
And it's not a very bright light, at least not for me right now.
Yeah, yeah. But it will get brighter as you get closer.
Because it's only a faith of a Muzart seat that you have to have.
That's it. Sure. Yeah. Sure.
But I agree with what Angie said also, is that, you know, I think we can do more.
Yeah.
Especially for those that are struggling. For those that are starting to hunger and thirst. I mean, where do you go? You know, reading the Bible is awesome. It is. You know, before COVID, I mean, we were doing, Gary's wife was doing classes at her house.
Wow.
So, you know, we were, it was, you know, one day a week, and then we were doing Bible study. So, I mean, it's not, like you said, it's not just Sundays.
Yeah.
Really needs to be more.
Yeah.
You know, we had, there's this class that, you know, that now I'm coming to, but, I mean, I agree with Angie. I just, I don't know what needs to happen.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, let me, yeah, let me. Yeah.
I need more.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did the grief share class, but I want to continue with growth. I want to continue with my healing.
Yes.
And I don't know where to do it. I don't know how to do it, but I know that I want it.
Right.
I do.
Right. So Jeff, I'll let you take this after me. Here's the thing. Angie and I were challenged at this last conference that we were at when it talks about being a disciple maker as well. And they said, "Choose three people in your life. Pray and ask the Lord, who are three people in your life that you could disciple? That you can give your life to, that you can..." Now, you're saying, "I need to be discipled as well." Yes, you do. So the reality is, one, pray, God, who can be, who can come stirring somebody's heart to disciple me? And there might be somebody already here that's saying, "I want the Holy Spirit stirring in you to say, 'I'm gonna come along, Lisa, and I'm gonna disciple her,' right? But in your turn, in obedience to the Lord, say, 'Okay, God, I need to be discipled, but I also need to be a disciple maker, because you tell me to be. And so let me be obedient to you, and as Jesus' word said, seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these other things will be added to you.'" Sometimes we're waiting for the opportunity, or we're waiting to do something, and God's saying, "No, no, the opportunity's now. He's called you. He's called you. He's called you. He's called every single one of us to do this." And so if we say, you know, "I'm in a dark place," or "I need to be discipled," maybe the question is also in turn, you know, "Who do you want me to be discipling, Lord?" Jeff, yeah?
Yeah. So your question about how to grow in the knowledge. I decided a long time ago that the Bible is a very difficult book to learn.
Yes.
I really need somebody or some group who took the time to find out how to start from the simple stuff, move to the medium stuff, and then get to the advanced stuff. You know, in my travels of doing some discipleship with friends, I know one system very thoroughly. I've heard of three or four others. I've looked a little bit at the one you guys have used in the last place. So these are, these are options.
Right.
You pick the one you want to use, and maybe it'll work.
Right.
I don't know that one. I've heard.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. There's some guys on TV. Yeah, radio or TV.
So let me, let me speak a little bit of vision to this for you guys. We're doing this series right now for us to, if we can't state it, we can't make it, right? So we are taking this seven-week series for us to know what is a disciple and what is a disciple maker, and for us to get them. So this, this is the process. So if you're wondering, "How do I do it? Why am I doing it?" By the end of this seven-week series that we're doing this, we should be fully equipped with what to do. Now Angie and I and Jeff, we've actually talked about different type of discipleship models that we'd like to implement here in this church. And that's, really, we want to get back to the Jesus biblical model, right? But I would encourage you, in the meantime, while we're going through this seven-week series, it's 2025, guys. What does that mean? Why am I saying it that way? Is because in 2025, you can open this thing right here and get a Bible, get the Bible app, and there are thousands of Bible plans, devotionals, and they're specific. You could be like, "I'm a weird person that likes cats. Can you give me a devotional?" And it'll give you like a cat devotional. You know what I'm talking about? Like that's, I'm not serious. There actually is a cat devotional. I did see one once. There actually is one. It's not on U version. It's not on U version. But I'm just saying, you know what I mean? But like, it could be specific, like, "Hey, I, you know, I'm really struggling with this. I'm struggling with faith theology, or teach me about eschatology or chaliseology. Tell me about, I want to know about the Spirit more." There's all of those different types of things, all in our, like, at our fingertips. And so for some of us, if we want to grow in that knowledge, there's one, and I'll just tell you this right, it's called the Bible Recap. One of the most phenomenal Bible resources I've ever, write it down, the Bible Recap. It's broken up into two, multiple sections. You could do just the Old Testament if you want. You could do just the New Testament if you want. Or you can do the whole Bible plan as you want. But Sarah Lee Cobble, who works with a team, she also works with another plan called The Bible Project, just simply every day walks you through, here's a couple of chapters, and walks you through the context in a simple way and breaks it down and makes it digestible for us who are like, and I'm telling you, they're using this curriculum in Bible colleges. Okay? They're using The Bible Project in Bible college, which they'll, you know, if you're like, "Hey, I got some more time to really study." All right? So I'm gonna look, go on YouTube and look up The Bible Project, and I'm gonna look at the Book of Genesis. And it will walk you through the different themes. The Christology, meaning seeing Christ in it. You'll see so much in it. So like, if you want to spend that time, it's there for you. The resource is there. If you ever want resources and stuff, please come and see me, see Pastor Angie. We will point you in the direction of making it. As Jeff said, the Bible is a difficult book to read at times. It's not even written chronologically, you know, in most standard Bibles. So that's confusing in one stance already, all right? But that's just, those are what, so if you didn't get that, come to me afterwards and we'll talk. We'll just keep going here. We're moving quite, quite quickly tonight, which is pretty awesome. I think it's because the videos are a little bit shorter than others. So here we are. "To know a person, we must spend time with him or her. To know Jesus, we meditate on the truth found in his word, and we pray. We turn to him for guidance, for example, to follow, and for power to obey him. And more we relate to him personally, the more we come to love and devote ourselves to him." Let's keep moving on. We're gonna, we're gonna go through some of these ones. If one of these questions really burns in your heart, let me know. But we're gonna keep going through this, this content here. Second, "Disciples are transformational. In his final words, Jesus told his disciples to go and make disciples. Baptizing and teaching them to become a disciple means that God has transformed us, thanks in part to the witness and teaching of other disciples. In what ways has being surrounded by other disciples changed you for the better? And whom do you see helping others mature in their faith?" Stephen, what were you gonna say? You were gonna answer that question for me?
Yes. What am I answering? Back it up.
Do you know where we are, Stephen? Okay, fantastic. "In what ways has being surrounded by other..." This is a joke to you, Stephen.
Better. It's life-changing. And yes, you, oh, Anita.
Yes.
Yes, Anita has been great. Just being around her and other people just changed her life 180.
Great, great answer, Stephen. It was aggressive. Don't worry about it. I'm just trying to get Stephen to talk more. Just say anything. You're next, Joe. All right, so I'm just kidding. I love you, Joe. "In what ways has being surrounded by other disciples changed you for better?" I think a lot of us have these answers, you know? We've already heard some of the stuff, Diane's Bible study, Sunday School that we began to talk, talk to other people, 700 Club, Grief Share. That's so important. That's so important to be around other people, to witness, seeing them, to learn from them. And discipleship happens within community. What? You're gonna speak to that? You want to say something? Oh, there's time, honey. I always make time for you, honey.
I always have to remind myself that not everybody grew up in a Christian home the way I did. Not everybody grew up in church the way I did. So I might think love is normal, and I might think a healthy home is normal. But when somebody else has never experienced that before, bringing that, that person into your home dynamic and into your life could completely revolutionize their perspective of God. You know, like, our years of youth ministry, our philosophy has always been like, "Come have lunch with us. Come help me fold laundry. Come hang out with our kids while they're running around the house."
Right.
And they come into it, and they're like, a lot of them, you know, after several times of like spending time with us, they're just like, "I've, I've never like encountered like a couple who loves each other the way you do, or like this, like healthy home. Like, I've never felt this before." And that right there is the key to unlocking, "Well, this is why I need God."
Yeah.
You know, and so I encourage those of you with like, to bring somebody who's broken, who's maybe never seen that or experienced that before. And don't assume they, you know, don't assume anything is healthy at home just because they put on a happy face, you know, at the church. Bring them in, show them, you know, what, what, what love is, and show them what like a healthy marriage is. That right there is just absolutely life-changing for them. So just want to encourage you guys with that.
That's good. Like I said, discipleship happens with community. Jesus spoke to the group about a plurality of the future believers. "We encourage lean on and learn from one another." Says, "What are the dangers in allowing a new believer to begin the discipleship process alone? Studying the Scriptures and sharing the gospel without fellow disciples? The enemy of our soul wants us isolated. He wants us alone." Paul talks about the body of Christ, that we're together. When one of us hurts, we all hurt. When one of us is honored, we're all honored. That is an intimate, close type of, I mean, Donna, you said it. How will be, how will the world know that you were my disciples because of your love for one another? Right? It's important that we are doing stuff communally, growing together, that if somebody comes to know Jesus here, what are we doing to go and to disciple them? Last thing tonight, "The second part of Jesus' command was to teach his disciples all that he commanded his followers. Knowing the truth of Scripture is critical to the development of a mature disciple. To develop disciples into disciple makers, we need churches to equip them to understand and communicate Scripture and the many ways to apply those truths to everyday situations." Third, "The aspect of a disciple is that we, that they are co-missional. Jesus' mandate to his followers sent them out to make disciples, just as he had done with them. His mission became their mission, and it's our mission today. His mission became our mission, their mission, and it's our mission today. We are called to do more than share the gospel." I'll say that again. We are called to do more than share the gospel. Jesus has commissioned us to make disciples, dedicated loyal followers of Jesus who model his love and share it with others." And this is a question I'd like for you to answer on your own time, is, "To what extent have you felt included in God's mission?" Because we're supposed to be co-missional. Co-missional means together, cooperating together. What roles have you played in the past, a part of disciple-making process? What encouragement would you give those who want to start leading others to disciple on this journey? Let's continue these conversations. If you know somebody who's, who's older or been in the faith for a long time, talk to them, be like, "Hey, how have you made disciples?" Or, "Hey, I really want to be a disciple maker. We're talking about this. We're learning, and we're growing, and we're doing these things, and I want to do that." How have you discipled other people in the past? Being called to make disciples might feel like a burden to some, intimidating tasks they feel they must live up to. And many in our churches do not feel equipped to make disciples, but Jesus promised to be with us all, to be with us through it all. And then Acts 1:8, "We read of his final words, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come on you, then you will be my witnesses." Final words tonight. "Before we can create an effective plan to turn believers into disciple makers, we must agree on the definition of a disciple. We can't make it if we can't state it." Jeff described disciples as relational, transformational, and co-missional, understanding that disciple-making is a process and not a mere event. It's not Sunday morning. Understanding that discipleship-making is a process, not a mere event, will help us craft effective strategies for making disciples who in turn make disciples. Looking to Jesus' last words, we are encouraged to pursue the ongoing practice with hope, knowing we are not working on our own. Jesus wasn't anointing perfect people to carry on his mission. He was inviting his sometimes doubting, often confused, and regularly fearful followers to join him in a project that would span their lifetimes. And he extends the same invitation to us, promising us, promising to be with us every step of the way. Praise God. Heavenly Father, I pray for my friends here tonight. God, I pray through your Holy Spirit and through the words that we have read tonight, your final words to us, that, God, we would know that you have spoken to every single one of us and says, "Follow me, and I will make you fishers of men." That you are calling every single one of us to be disciple makers. There's not a single person in this room who is the exception to that. Jesus, you called us to be a disciple maker. It means that we have to live transformed lives, that we have to live relational lives and co-missional lives. You have called us, and you promised that you would send your spirit to empower us and that you would be with us always. So God, I pray against fear. I pray against confusion, and I pray that there would be a peace and a hope that's infused inside of us to be the disciple makers that you've called us to be. And I'm excited for these next six weeks that we're gonna spend together on how we can craft that, how we can build our confidence, how we can lean on the word, grow in maturity, and be the disciple makers that you've called us to be. We love you and we thank you in your name. Amen. Amen. You've got session two available to you already, so make sure that you guys are looking over that. Get ready for that. And we will see you guys Sunday morning and next Wednesday for the second session on disciple-making. Love you guys so much. Go forward. Go be disciple-ers and disciple-makers. Oh, yeah, it's Mother's Day. Pastor Angie's preaching, bringing the word. She's forced me to lead worship, so you guys are gonna have to basically listen to a rubber chicken for Sunday service. Yeah, that's what it's gonna sound like on Sunday. So you know those ones you squeeze? Right? Like, I love HA.